We are live at seven o'clock, so at this moment, I would like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting of July 8th, 2021, and invite you all to join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. And item three on our agenda is the administration of oath to the newly reappointed planning commissioners, Stacia Namath and Bart Avery. So Ms. O'Brien, please raise your right hand.
Both of us?
Yeah.
Yes, I will say my name and yours, are yours?
Yeah. Okay, I state your name. I, Stacia Namath.
I, Bart Avery.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend Do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States. And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well. And that I will well. And faithfully discharge. And faithfully discharge. The duties upon which I'm about to enter. The duties upon which I am about to enter. Yay, congratulations. Thank you. Yay. All right, and that will bring us to item number four, roll call. Chair Namath?
Here.
Vice Chair Avery?
Here.
Commissioner Foggasane?
Here.
Commissioner Henderson?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Thank you, we are all in attendance. All right, item five on our agenda is the selection of the Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair positions. Once a year, the commission has the opportunity to select a Chair and Vice Chair. So at this time, I will ask for a nomination for the position of Planning Commission Chair.
We have to make a motion to nominate our current Chair, Ms. Namath.
I second. Okay, thank you very much, we have a nomination from Commissioner Avery and a second for Commissioner Foggasane to appoint Chair Namath as the Chair. So, all in a favor, say, oh, do we have to do a voice? We do.
I would do a roll call then.
Okay, thank you. Ms. O'Brien, could you please? Chair Namath? Yes. Vice Chair Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Foggasane?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Well, thank you. Chair Namath is now reappointed as Chair Namath, so thank you all very much. In the third party. All right, and then our Vice Chair position, we also must select someone for that. I nominate Bart Avery. All right, so I have a nomination for Bart Avery as Vice Chair.
A second nomination.
And I have a second, so our nomination is by Commissioner Foggasane's and our second is by Commissioner Smith. And could we please have a vote for that? Chair Namath?
Yes.
Vice Chair Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Foggasane?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Congratulations, Vice Chair Avery, you are still Vice Chair Avery.
Thank you, appreciate that too.
All right, and item six on our agenda is the review of the agenda, Ms. Taggart?
Thank you, so staff is recommending or asking for continuance of item 10A.
All right, may I get a motion to continue item 10A to a future date?
So moved.
Second. Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Henderson and a second from Commissioner Smith. Can we have a voice vote, and motion is to continue item 10A to a future date. Vice Chair Namath? Pardon me? I'm sorry, Chair Namath. I'm sorry. Chair Namath. Sorry, um, yes. Vice Chair Avery?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Foggasane?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
All right, item 10A will be continued to a future date. Any other items to review on the agenda, Ms. Taggart?
There are none.
Okay, great. All right, item seven, may I please get a motion to waive the full reading of all resolutions on the agenda for this meeting?
So moved.
Second. All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Henderson and a second from Commissioner Foggasane's. Could we please have a voice vote to waive all the reading of full resolutions? Chair Namath?
Yes.
Vice Chair Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Foggasane?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much, the motion passes with five yes votes. At this time, this brings us to public comments on our consent calendar items and on any items that are not on our agenda. Do we have any ecomments?
Not at this time, Chair Namath.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, our consent calendar consists of approving the minutes from our regular Planning Commission meeting of last month.
Motion to approve the minutes from last month.
I have a motion from Commissioner Henderson and a second from Commissioner Smith. Uh, can we please get a voice vote on that? Chair Namath?
Yes.
Vice Chair Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Foggasane?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much, the minutes from last month's meeting are approved. That will bring us to item 10B.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I operate a competing business and I want to ensure that the applicant for this item gets a fair hearing, so in abundance of caution, I will recuse myself from this item.
All right, thank you very much, I appreciate that, and we will call you back in when we are finished. Thank you. All right.
This item will be presented by Justin Sauter. Good evening, Planning Commission. Tonight, we have conditional use permit 1423, major modification number three for Transplants Brewery. Transplants Brewery is requesting to add an additional alcohol service area, restrooms, and a walk-in cooler to their existing tenant space. The brewery is located at 40242 La Quinta Lane in units 101 and 102. The site is fully developed in compliance with the PMC, and there are no exterior improvements proposed. The improvements include a new alcohol service area, a men's and women's restroom, and a walk-in cooler in unit 102, as you can see here. And microbreweries are not subject to the maximum floor area requirement for the sale, display, and storage of alcohol. Per the PMC, the Planning Commission may consider the following to determine if the CUP should be approved: whether the proposed establishment would result in an over-intensification of alcoholic beverage establishments, whether the proposed establishment would be located in a high-crime area, information in the surrounding area, and the hours of operation of the establishment. Transplants Brewery is considered an other alcoholic beverage establishment with a type 23 ABC license, and this means that they are a microbrewery. They may sell, serve, or give away alcoholic beverages for consumption, both on and off the premise. The two methods to determine over-intensification are the population density method and the retail density method. The first is the population density method, which according to this method, the site would be considered to be over-intensified because there are two other alcoholic beverage establishments within the census tract, and none are allowed. It should be noted, however, that due to the small population within the census tract, the population density method will yield an over-intensification for just one other alcoholic beverage establishment, and Transplants is an existing brewery. The second method to determine over-intensification is the retail density method. According to the retail density method, one and one-half establishments may be located within 2,500 feet of each other, and there are currently two existing within a 2,500-foot radius, both Transplants and Lucky Luke's. Therefore, the site would have an over-intensification of other alcoholic beverage establishments. However, it should be noted that due to the small number of other alcoholic beverage establishments within the city, the retail density method will yield an over-intensification at any site within 2,500 feet of each other. Furthermore, Transplants is an existing business, and this approval will not change the number of other alcoholic beverage establishments within the city. Crime, the project site is within crime reporting district 2619, which exhibits high crime at 280% of the city average wide crime rate. The majority of crimes were committed further south of Transplants near Rancho Vista Boulevard and the 14 freeway. According to the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, there were two calls for service reported at or near the site in the last year, and both were routine in nature. The Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department has not indicated any opposition to the approval of this modification. For location standards, Transplants is not located near any sensitive uses or sexually oriented businesses. Planning Commission has three options tonight. Option one is to adopt resolution number PC 2021-018, approving CUP 14-023, major modification number three, and find that the project is categorically exempt from environmental review. Option two is to continue the project and direct staff to return with additional information. Option three is to deny the project. Option one is recommended. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sauter. Do any of the commissioners have technical questions for staff at this time? Okay, if there are no technical questions, then I shall open this up for public comments. Are there any people, did we get any ecomments for this?
We did not, but the applicants are on the Zoom meeting.
Okay, and are there any other people here for public comments on the Zoom meeting?
Not at this time, Chair Namath.
Okay, then could we please have the applicants pop their little faces up here for us to speak to?
See ya. Hey, everybody.
Hi there, welcome to our meeting, how are you?
Hi, all right, how are you?
We are well, thank you very much. Okay, do any commissioners have questions for the applicants?
Unrelated to what we're talking about, yeah, I saw a menu of food in the background last time. You guys serve food too? No? It's a joke. Don't worry about it. You don't have to answer it, it was a background screen, thank you. Some days we have three food trucks in a day, like, there's, with all the events, we've got lots of food options here. Gotcha, thank you.
Okay, so I just want to confirm that you have read the conditions of approval for your modification, and I know you've been through this a couple times before, so you understand all of this, but do you agree to all of the conditions of approval?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm just going to assume it's a good sign if you have to put in more bathrooms and more alcohol service area. I do have a question, is the parking, is the parking sufficient to, I guess obviously the people are probably there if you're feeling compelled to expand.
As far as parking, all the other businesses in our area right here are all daytime businesses, so it works really well. They use the parking during the day and we've got it at night. There's still plenty more on the street, so it's pretty much unlimited parking here, we've never really had an issue.
Okay, wonderful. All right, any other questions for our applicant?
Is there still street racing taking place in the area? In your area? No, that's, there used to be when we first moved in here. Now we have car shows here once a month, and they're very strict about not allowing that, so I, it hasn't been a problem in years. Great, okay, thank you.
All right. Well then, thank you very much for attending, and if there's nobody else here to speak on this, we will close the public comments for this, if there's no objection to that.
Also, our business partner Cory regrets not being able to attend tonight, but his wife is literally having a baby right now.
Well, I guess the priorities are in order there, so that's good.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, and thank you. Okay.
Thanks, everyone, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. All right, could we have either discussion on this or a motion to discuss?
I'll make a motion to approve option one of item 10B on the agenda.
Oh, and I should say, what we're going to try to do now when we make our motions is to actually read the recommended motion, so that that'll make it clear to our public listening audience.
Going old school.
We're going old school on it now.
All right, so I recommend that the Planning Commission adopt resolution PC 2021-018, approving conditional use permit 10-023, major modification number three, and find that the project is categorically exempt from environmental review.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Henderson has made a motion, do I have a second? Second. All right, and Commissioner Foggasane's has made a second, any discussion on the motion? All right, then let us call for the voice vote on that, please.
Before we get a vote, can I get a clarification on the conditional use permit number?
Oh, 10.
I have 14-023.
So do I.
That's what I have. Did I not say that?
I think you said 10.
Said 10.
Oh, I'm sorry, 14023. I must have just said it wrong, I was looking at it right. Yeah, conditionally used 14-023. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so the motion is to approve the resolution, to adopt the resolution approving the CUP. So can we have a voice vote on that, please? Chair Namath?
Yes.
Vice Chair Avery, oops, he's recused himself. Commissioner Foggasane?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
All right, let the record reflect that the motion has passed with four yes votes, and Commissioner Avery recused himself. So thank you very much, and congratulations to Transplants. And if we could please allow Commissioner Avery back in our room, we will continue. All right, thank you very much, and welcome back, and that will bring us to item 10C. This item will also be presented by Justin Sauter, give us just a moment.
Reporting stop.
Presentation up.
All right, we have conditional use permit 17016 at 1475 East Palmdale Boulevard, and the business is called Pro Club. So a little background, the Planning Commission may review any CUP to ensure it is being operated in a manner consistent with the conditions of approval, or in a manner which is not detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or materially injurious to properties in the vicinity. CUP 17016 was approved as a bail, bond, and check cashing facility on February 8th, 2018. Staff has received an incident crime report from the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department regarding crimes at 1475 East Palmdale Boulevard, Pro Club. The report details illegal activity by the tenant, including possession of a firearm with intent to commit a felony, possession of narcotics with a firearm, possession of controlled substances for sale, operating or maintaining a drug house, and possession of three illegal gambling machines known as tap-tap machines. Planning Commission has two options tonight. Option one is determine there is sufficient evidence to warrant a full investigation of CUP 17-016, and direct staff to set a public hearing date. Option two is determine that there is insufficient evidence to warrant a full investigation and take no further action. Option one is recommended.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sauter. Do the commissioners have any technical questions for staff at this time? I just want to confirm that it is approved, in the conditional use permit, it's approved for bail, bond, and check cashing. There is no approval for any arcade activity.
That is correct.
That is correct, okay, thank you very much. All right, if there are no technical questions, then we can open up the public comments, are there any public comments anywhere? No public comments, okay. Then may I either get a motion or any discussion on this item?
Based on, based on the facts that I've seen in the report, it does raise concern for me with respect to what's actually taking place at the facility. And so I would make a motion regarding for the, for the city to determine that there is sufficient evidence to warrant a full investigation of CUP 17-016, and direct staff to set a public hearing date for it.
I second that. All right, so I have a motion from Commissioner Smith and a second from Commissioner Foggasane's to direct staff to do a full investigation on this, any discussion on that motion? I would like to say that I am in agreement with that. And I would like to thank the Sheriff's Department for providing us with the information, because, you know, not all of us go into all of these businesses and we don't really know what's going on. But one of my concerns over the years has been, we're making these conditional use permits, and everybody has these uses, and they have all of the requirements, and we don't always know if they're complying, so it's nice to see. and we don't always know if they're complying, so it's nice to see that actually in action, so thank you very much. All right, well then, let us take a vote on the motion to request staff to open a full investigation on CUP 17016 and set a public hearing date.
Chair Ameth?
Yes.
Vice Chair Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Foggasane?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes with five yes votes. That will bring us to item 11, staff communications.
Thank you, I thought I would do something a little bit different and share my screen here. I did want to bring up that we are still in the depths of the general plan update process, and we are going through the policies. Every other week, we're having a joint public meeting and General Plan Advisory Committee meeting throughout the summer. So the next meeting coming up is on July 15th regarding land use and mobility, and then we have July 28th, August 5th, and August 11th. So if anyone would like to attend, we will be there at 6:30 on those days.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Doran?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Welcome back from your vacation.
Good to be back.
All right, item 12, Planning Commission communications, do any of our Commissioners have anything to share? I would like to congratulate Commissioner Foggasane's for surviving the tug-of-war on the 4th of July.
And Megan, she was our superstar.
And Ms. Taggart for being the awesome potato spear that she is. There was a friendly little competition done at the July 4th fireworks show at the fairgrounds, and Palmdale won both, so go Palmdale, good job.
Good job, everybody. The AV Fair Board's gonna come to the council meetings and do an official, because on social media, it's a little different story.
All righty, well, I think that's fair then.
Yeah.
And also, the city is going to have its concert series this summer, so weekends in August, there will be concerts at the amphitheater. And they're having a Michael Jackson tribute guy, that sounds really cool. And they're having a Stevie Ray Vaughan tribute, they're all tribute bands, Stevie Ray Vaughan, Metalachi, and Queen Nation. So... Should all be very much fun if you have a chance to get out to the amphitheater. And with that, I shall adjourn our meeting to our regularly scheduled meeting on August 12th at 7:00 PM. Boom, all done.
That was quick.